Evening.
How are you?
Let the countdown begin. Good evening, everyone. We'll call tonight's meeting to order for December 11th, 2024. Ms. Fetters, will you call the roll, please?
Todd Moore.
Here.
Christopher Ambergy.
President.
Roger Daniel.
Here.
David Cash.
Here.
Will Parsons.
Here.
Nancy Griffith. A.J. Mintel.
Please join us from the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to read our meeting minutes for November 13th? Any changes, modifications to the minutes? None?
I would move that they be accepted as presented.
Do we have a second? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambergy?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mintel?
It brings us to our first text amendment this evening. Before we get started, Mr. Cash, would you like to swear in, Ms. Fetters?
Yes, sir. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Ms. Fetters, I'll let you take the case from here.
All right. So this is a staff request to change Chapter 120806, Part F, Part 3, to modify the zoning districts that are permitted to have a fence height up to 10 feet. The text modification is proposed to remove residential districts from the existing text. Right below the request, you can see the bold chapter section as well as the part that is requested to be modified. And if you're a visual person like me, it's a little easier to look at it and straight from the zoning code. So here is a snapshot of the text. And then Exhibit A shows the proposed text modification with the highlighted yellow stricken-through text to be what is proposed to be removed.
Any questions for Ms. Fetters before we open the public hearing? Okay. Now we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Yeah, on this one, I guess we'll get a staff recommendation. Is that?
Not for text amendments.
Could you move back, Mr. Chair, to the last, or whoever's?
This one?
Okay. So the net result here is that residential districts are governed by the fourth section.
Second section.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, I have you. Okay, good enough. Thank you.
So they can only have six feet max height in residential. Yeah.
Thank you.
I know that this issue's come up a couple of different times in cases. It's hit or miss in terms of how we've handled this particular case. I think the only thing I'm looking at here is, in some cases where I can see this as being beneficial, there's other cases where we're talking about a 10-foot fence in residential. Sometimes that becomes somewhat of an issue. But, um, otherwise, that's the only thing I see. I don't necessarily see the issue when I want an I-2. The only thing here is maybe question some of those cases in a residential district. Especially when we've had streets where we've had the, uh, I forget the exact term on this right now, but we had a corner lot with facing, um, this is a side yard. Sometimes it comes up on what is a side yard and front facing. But, um, yeah, I'm just mentioning that to the board.
I assume there could still be variances given, right?
Yeah. Okay. Any other, does it look like we have consensus here for a motion? Do we want to take a motion at this point to approve?
I just have one question. Have the police been asked anything about a 10-foot fence?
I did not ask the police anything about this. No.
I'm sorry?
No, I haven't asked the police anything about this.
That's all.
I guess I have one question. Are there any, like, potential edge cases where this, where this change might cause conflicts? Like, I'm sure that was already, like, you know, part of the process was determining any, but nothing of note?
What do you mean?
Okay, never mind. I had a thought.
Well, this all stemmed from a BZA case that came before the last November meeting, I believe. Somebody built an eight-foot fence in height. And when I went to look at the zoning code, it gives conflicting information on what the maximum height can be in a side rear yard, so.
Any views on this particular case, one way or the other?
I'm okay with it.
I'll move to approve it?
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambergy?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mintel?
Okay. Brings us to our second text amendment this evening.
Okay. So this is a request from City Council to change Chapter 120601, Part A, Part 1, to correct the title of Planning Commission. The text modification is proposed to remove "and zoning" from the title of the commission. Just like for the fence height, here's a snapshot of the existing text. And then here's Exhibit B that shows the proposed text modification in yellow and the strike-through text, just to modify it.
Just one question regarding this change. Is this, are we looking at, is this a title question? Or are we talking about powers and decision-making roles and responsibilities? I didn't see that necessarily when we're thinking about "and zoning." Can you define that a little bit differently? When we look here underneath the roles and responsibility, does this change remove any of the zoning roles or responsibilities for the Planning Commission at all?
No, it wouldn't. It's really just to make the titles uniform across the entire code.
It's changing the actual title itself, yeah.
Correct.
Didn't see anything highlighted there. I just wondered about that. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Close the public hearing. Any questions, concerns about that? It looks like it's pretty straightforward. If there's no changes to powers or roles or responsibilities.
I think it's very consistent with the charter because the charter establishes a planning commission.
Any other comments? We ready for a motion? Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambergy?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mintel?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us now to text amendment number three. This involves the Board of Education and the seat to the Planning Commission. Ms. Fetters, I'll let you take the case from here.
All right. So this is a request from City Council to change Chapter 122601, Part B, Part 2, to allow for City Council to appoint all seven members of the Planning Commission and to remove the membership of the voting member that is appointed by the Board of Education for the Middletown City School District. The text amendment also modifies that only City Council can appoint a new member to the vacancy, or to a vacancy. The removal of Chapter 122601, Part B, Part 2, Part B, also results in an update of the bulletin.
Any questions for Ms. Fetters before we open the public hearing?
Only one logistical question. I know I had, and I think, I don't know whether everybody got my email. I think it might be quite instructive to, if they're available, to review the minutes from the meeting in 1958. Or it would have been in 1957 because it was signed in January of 1958, I believe.
So I got your email.
To understand somewhat the rationale and if there has been, because I'm looking at the review criteria, and when it cites, when the review criteria, uh, let me see here. It's, uh, number two, proposed amendment is necessary or desirable because of changing conditions. I'm just curious if it was cited what the conditions were back then that resulted in the amendment and why now? If circumstances have changed, so.
So, yeah, when Julie sent the Attachment A, she also provided a little narrative about the meeting minutes. She said the meeting minutes did not add any context as to why the Board of Education position was added. They were more concerned with who should appoint the commission, council, or the manager. She never got back to me on it.
There didn't, there didn't appear to be any discussion as why that particular member was to be a board member, a school board member? Because there had to be some reason why there was a change from the previous adopted 122601. Or no, I mean, I'm sorry, the, yeah, 1220s. There had to be some discussion as to why we're going from a board of seven, I believe it was, that was not, or nine, seven. All right, now I'm, anyway, where there was not a board member appointed, and then the amendment occurs, there had to be, that thought just doesn't come out of nowhere. Somebody had to have originated the thought and the rationale for that. And I'm just, I, as a retired attorney, I like precedent always is important when it comes to resolving current issues. So that's.
Agreed.
So I'm just.
Well done.
Okay, that's.
She never got back to me, but that was the narrative she gave initially.
In 1957, I can't imagine how they may have been recorded, if at all.
There was meeting minutes.
Hand-made notes or handwritten.
Right.
Well, there is monetary consideration in this, is there not?
In what respect?
That the city receives monies as a result of this arrangement?
That the, as a result of this text amendment?
No.
As a result of the fact that they are granted this seat.
There is no exchange of.
This was discussed recently at a City Council meeting.
Can you flesh that out a little bit for me? What type of compensation?
I can. I expect that you folks to be aware, quite frankly.
Well, I.
I'd like to flesh that out here soon. I don't want to jump the gun on that right now, but I will try to flesh that out somewhat in my comments as we move forward.
Okay.
I'd like to stay consistent with the hearing process, if I may, and just, um, at this point, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Absolutely. Thank you.
Paul, can you sit over there? It's still not working.
It's not working? Okay.
I'm gonna sit over here.
Mr. Cash, hopefully my case will help explain the purpose of this. So there's the twofold reason why this came up, and this actually should have been changed. Okay. Sorry, I don't want to be yelling. This actually should have been changed in 2015. We have a document that we renewed, and this is public record. It's called the Comprehensive School Compensation Agreement. And to also answer your question, in one section of it, it says, this is on page one. It's all the wherewithals. I'm not an attorney, so. But it says, whereas a healthy public school system is vital to the economic development and welfare of the city. That might have been the thought back in 1956 when they were thinking, okay, well, we need to get involved. Now, the purpose of this document, which is signed, by the way, by both parties, and when I always say both parties, the City of Middletown and the Middletown School District, and I love the way the legal director described this, is it's like two states with a common border. They have their own governments. They can make suggestions to each other, but they don't have to do what the other one says if they don't want to. So in this agreement, in Section 1, and it has an A, B, and C, and I'll just read one of the, under Section B, it says, community reinvestment or in area exemptions. It says, the school district hereby approves all future tax exemption granted by the city to an eligible property owner in a community reinvestment area, allowable geographic area, as described in Exhibit A within the meaning of the ordinance. So the thought of this is, is we're not removing a person, we're removing an entity. And this is the second reason why this was brought up. City Council, which this board was established by City Council. When the school district says, this is our person, be it Joe Smith or Mary Smith, they just say, this is their person. There is no vetting like we're doing now with all future folks who are going on these boards, and there is no consideration. It's just, this is your person for four years. So, and we have an example, and I do not feel that the school board representative on this board did this in malice or not knowing, but at the October meeting, when you all met for Lincoln Heights, the school board-appointed person asked about the TIF. Now, any citizen that's appointed by the City Council, you can ask about TIFs. But to me, it's kind of redundant when they've already agreed, being the school district, and this is the school district's representative. Why are you asking about a TIF that you've already agreed to? Because this document, which is signed by all the appropriate people, said, we're good with all future endeavors. And the main thing is, with the Planning Commission, any major developer, and this is where I don't see things this way. I'm the old school of, let's find the investors, get the land, get it built, and go. But a lot of developers will come to a city saying, okay, well, we want to develop. We want your city land, and we want to give, we want TIFs, we want 15-year exemptions or 30-year exemptions. So, and the purpose of this plan is either you sign it or you don't. If the school district and the city says, we're not going to do this in 2027, then the school district now has a seat at the table on all developments, which that can be involved, or they can slow-walk, which none of us want. So this agreement, in my interpretation, is saying, okay, the school district has already agreed to all this that we're doing here. City Council would prefer to have seven people that they vet and that they appoint. And again, this is not at a person, this is at an entity that already has said, we're good. We're busy doing, educating your kids, having them grow up. I love the City of Middletown school systems, working with the Chamber of Commerce, the workforce development. We need that so badly, and they are championing that. So they're busy doing their thing, and that's why they signed this agreement. And they just, and again, this is not a new agreement that was just signed last April. This was the second renewal. So this has been around. And to the point of the 1956, if you go back and look at that, things change because, Claire, did you get a promotion? Are you our city manager now?
No.
Okay, good, because I think Ashley doesn't want to, I think she wants to stay your boss. We also don't have a president, vice president, or secretary. It's, I'm not a city commissioner. I'm a city councilman. So things change over time. And I just think this was just a, no one saw it, that, okay, we need to look at this. The school district signed this. We signed it. It's an agreement between the two parties saying, we're good, and we're going to trust that the monies that the school district receives through the TIFs, through the tax exemptions, be it 15 or 30 years. Now, if they want more of a TIF, then they do go to the school district and say, hey, this person wants to develop 100 acres. They want a TIF, and this is all we can offer them. Then we do get the city school system involved. Because we do want that economic development between the city and the school district. The people come here for both reasons, because we have a healthy school system, because that's what builds great cities and townships, is school systems. That is the foundation. But with this, that is the purpose of this, is that we, City Council, for this advisory board, that we have all seven members that are vetted and appointed with the minimum recommended requirements of United States citizen, you live in the city limits, and you're a voter, and you're over 18. The reason why we're actually having staff do vetting is just to check the application. Just to see, okay, you didn't commit a felony. Good. You live in the city limits. Good. And then City Council can deliberate, and because a lot of times they'll fill out, they want to be on Planning Commission, they want to be on Historical, they want to be on the library. They have a lot of time on their hands, or they, we want to find the person for the right deal. Because you are our voice. If you didn't exist, City Council would, I guarantee you, have to meet four times a month and would have eight-hour meetings, because we would have to take care of all this. And we greatly appreciate you being volunteers, being paid the low, low price of $0. But that is the purpose of this text amendment. It is to remove the entity that should have been removed, and the school district doesn't have a problem. They signed this. I think this is our third rotation of this.
Mr. Horn, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the Comprehensive School Finance Agreement that you're referring to, where do you see that there is some mutually exclusive problem between being a board member? I'll pull you to the review criteria, whether or not that there are social or economic conditions. What you've laid out addresses the relationship, the entire reason why we want to have a board member on this, on the Planning Commission. The Comprehensive School Finance Document, the only time a school board member would ever see that document is when your leadership, the city manager, and you as a board member and a council would bring that to us in a mutual manner to finance any number of different projects within the city. There is nothing wrong with being on a board and having the relationship between both parties. It's the entire purpose of signing that document. It shows a relationship that we mutually, city and the schools, want to work together. Therefore, we sign that document together. That document has nothing that precludes anything to do with this Planning Commission. In fact, it's all the reason why we would want to have a seat at the table. You're going to want economic development. That development's going to impact the city. It's going to impact the schools. That document only says, we agree with you. We're willing to work with you. We want to abate taxes. We want. There is nothing negative about that document or illegal or anything otherwise. I'm not even sure I understand that you even understand the document yourself. I don't believe that you do, and I'm not saying that sarcastically here to be a smart mouth here. I'm being very honest. I do not believe that you understand the rationale of that document. That document is only intended to strengthen the relationship. There's nothing, there's no conflict there between the two parties. In fact, that's the entire purpose. It's the entire rationale for that document to exist. Now, I'd like to take the second part that you've talked about, about a member, that would be me, because on October 10th, after our meeting, you went out of your way to tell me that you would like to remove me from this board, using the very document that you're citing. And if you remember correctly, I said, that document, I'm saying the same thing to you publicly as I said to you that evening. That document is a relationship. That document only strengthens a relationship between Middletown City Schools and the City of Middletown. You mentioned, for instance, that I'm not allowed to say anything about a TIF. Why? Why can I not mention a TIF? It's going to come back to your school finance document. A TIF, a tax increment finance district, we need to work together on that. You will need a TIF when you build on the Lincoln School Site. You will be asking for a TIF on that project. I ask about a TIF because that's what's going to bring a better development to the Lincoln School Site. What is wrong with asking a question about a TIF? I just don't understand the logic. So explain to me why I'm not allowed, or any other member's not allowed, to ask a question about a TIF?
It's my time now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, number one, when I came to you, you did not have this document.
No, but you showed it to me, Paul.
I did not. I didn't have it with me. So I came to you trying to be kind. I'll learn not to do that again. Because I tried to tell you before I put this to legal what I was doing. And we had a conversation. We'll just leave it there. When, and here's where I'm confused. So you're on the school board. Is that accurate?
It is.
You've been elected to the school board. So, and like any other document that I see, that they bring to us, we reveal. Are you telling me that back in, when they signed this, that this was not brought before the school board? That the treasurer, the superintendent, and the president signed this without your knowledge?
No, I'm not saying that it wasn't without my knowledge. I'm saying it's completely irrelevant.
I'm good.
It is, I hope that that is the process, Paul. That is the process.
And the thing is, is after we had our conversation, I told you, and I can see this thing about, I love about the internet. I emailed you that evening after we talked, after we spoke.
To clarify the record, Paul, let me say this. You did not have that document tonight. I asked you to send it to me in an email, and you did.
I did. But you just stated before that I showed this to you, and I'm trying to remove you. No, that's not the case at all. Again, any of you can ask about a TIF. Todd, you can ask about a TIF, but it is kind of redundant to me if the group that you represent has already approved it.
But, Paul, I don't.
It is, it's absolutely redundant.
I don't follow logic here.
So, no, no, I'm good. I'm good. I'm very good with this.
In terms of approving it.
So, and this is why in my presentation, I made it very clear, I'm not trying to remove a person. In fact, when we and Mr. Moore was having our conversation, I made it very clear. Mr. Moore is a highly intelligent man that knows our ordinances and our laws, that knows it better than most, and is passionate about it. it better than most, and is passionate about it. But the fact that we have a document that says, you've already agreed to this, I told Mr. Moore, you apply like everybody else, you'll be our seventh member. Nothing changes aside from the school district being removed. That's why I said in the beginning of my, my case, I'm removing an entity with the votes if they vote for it, not Mr. Moore. I want Mr. Moore on this, on this, on this and on zoning, as long as Mr. Moore wants to, or as long as the timelines go. We have a document here where the school district has said, we're good with TIFs, we're good with any tax abatement that you want to do. They signed it. They agreed to it. They renewed it. This is the third time they renewed it. Now, they might not renew it in '27, and actually, they put some wording in after '25. They can go over every other, every two years and kind of back off and say, nope, we're not going to do this. It is state law. Either they sign this, or they are going to be in our development. And I have no problem with either way.
But Paul, we said.
But I'm saying that they signed this and they agreed to this. And the other fact of it is, we, as city council, who established this board, we get no say-so who gets put on there. Now, I don't think the school district's going to put someone who's going to be controversial or cause the city harm, or, or try to go against any type of economic development. But it is, you are our planning commission, correct? It says it in the ordinance. It says, established by city council.
Hey.
So.
I'm just going to interject really fast, because I feel like we're flying off the rails a little bit.
I was going to move a different question, if we may.
Well, can we just talk a little bit about this agreement? Because I feel like it's not totally clear exactly what it is. It's just an agreement between the school district and the city that talks about how they're going to interact when it comes to the various economic development tools in the SAGE toolbox.
Right.
I could see you have a question.
If, if that's.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm, I would just like to ask if, could you maybe expand upon, I'm, I'm kind of missing the connection between, I guess, maybe it would help, I mean, we don't have the document, between that document and then the, this text amendment of where the.
The purpose, the, the purpose of this text amendment is, is, and this, and it's mine, obviously, that I brought it forward. And city council has pushed it to you guys, and they want a review, and it's sent back yes or no. The only reason, when I saw this, and Mr. Cahal is at a Todd Moore level of being able to explain things. And basically, when, when he presented this, it was, you sign this, and the school district is okay with our development plans. If you don't sign it, and this is Ohio law, you either sign it or you don't. If you don't sign it, or they, or the school district's like, no, you know, we want to be more involved. We want to get involved with everything that goes on. We have, we have extra people that can do this now. Then they don't sign it in '27. And then they say, okay, now, there's still TIFs, there's still 15 years, there's still 30-year tax, tax exemptions. But then, when someone, like, we're going to hear from a, a group, they are involved before it comes to you guys. And they're doing the sit-down. They're saying, okay, now, what are we doing with this? What are we doing with that? How's this affect? How many people are you bringing in? Is it a business? Is it residence? Is, what's the density and everything else? So, that's why the school district is doing this. This text amendment is just a text amendment. Again, this is not at a person. This is to remove an entity and to add a citizen. So, we have seven citizens that are appointed by city council. That's all this is. It's, it is that simple. It is not that, it's a text amendment. I'm not asking you to approve a $200 million development that we, we came in with on a bar napkin.
So, what that agreement represents is just the school district's standing approval for various economic development tools that the city may use. And my understanding, it does not reference planning commission. It does not reference planning commission's seat on, on this board, or the school board member's seat on this board.
My apologies. I should have brought.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like a copy of that agreement.
Me too. Absolutely.
You all can look at it. And ultimately, it's up to you to decide what's relevant and what's not. But it doesn't reference planning commission.
Yeah, I'd just say for the record, I do believe that there's just a significant misunderstanding of the purpose, the intent of the document. And, but, and again, the, it would make, it would be illogical, it would be bad policy, it would be outright wrong for any other conclusion to be drawn, that that document fully supports the city's economic development. That's, that's the only purpose of that document. It's its primary purpose of that document, which has been signed, I don't even know how long. It goes back into history of our economic development, probably, I don't know when that actually starts technically, but it's, it's going to go back probably 40 or 50 years or more. So, that document is very relevant. It will continue to be relevant, but it has very little bearing on, on, on our decision-making here. But let me, let me, let me shift gears for a moment. As you mentioned, the one thing here that is unique about a, a seat from the school board, when we're looking at a whole number of financing proposals, when you're talking about the CRA, or you talk about a TIF, or you talk about other development tools, I want to be clear that our role, my role as a school board member, or this seat itself, we have no interaction with what the city does in development, other than working through the process to make certain that we understand the tax implications, abatements, those type, that type of relationship. In your development plans, we're not involved in what the future development's going to be. We're involved in, in looking at that from a financial perspective and its impact on kids and families in the community, which is what I want to draw our attention to. When we're looking at this review criteria, okay, we've got a document here from 1959. In that document, it talks about the health, the welfare, the general welfare of the community. This seat has been here for almost, what now? Well, I wrote this down. Is it 65 years? The relationship between the city and the schools has been consistent for over 65 years. This is the first time. Is there any other record, Paul, that you can point to within 65 years where that has been questioned? Public health or general welfare? Do you have anything you can point to there in the record that you would say, to address our review criteria? What, other than the document that you've listed, rises to the challenge to say that there should no longer be a seat here at the table, as we work together mutually towards economic development?
No, Mr. Moore, that's what change is about, just like the document from 1956. But they, now Todd, you got to let me get my full thought out. Okay, that's, that's, that's how this works. I'm trying to be fair here. So, when I saw that document that was put in by the mayor, it made me look at it. And it's like, okay, the city manager doesn't sit here anymore. Do you know why the city manager doesn't sit here anymore? Because over time, city council figured out the city manager was sitting on this board, zoning, historical, and anything else. And they were kind of sitting here like, I'm the city manager. You're going to vote. Yes, 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 yes. Maybe didn't say it, but kind of like in almost intimidation. This is from the, my historian that works in this building and knows, she's the matriarch of Middletown. She knows everything, because she keeps the records. So, just give me a little rope here, Todd, Mr. Moore. So, there, things change. I don't know when this comprehensive law came into effect. But when we decided to do that, then things changed. Someone, and I know our ordinances, I have a copy, copies. It's two phone book thick. There's a lot of things going on, and some very odd laws we have in Middletown. So, I just kind of flip by those. But things change, just like we don't have a vice president, a president, a secretary. They changed that. I'm not a city commissioner. I'm a city council. They have the, a city planner here instead of the city manager. So, over time, we change things. So, my point, Mr. Moore, is that changed. Now, maybe in 2015, legal looked at it and said, eh, we're good. You know, the, the school can have this and that. I, and that's, and that's my interpretation, Todd. I'm, Mr. Moore, I'm, I'm, that's, that's my interpretation. You can say, oh, well, you're not understanding. Okay. Just like, just like in 16, if the law was available, you could buy medical marijuana in the city limits of Middletown. In 17, you couldn't. Why? Because they made a prohibition. And then no one, and then in '24, we changed it again. Correct? So, to, to answer your question, I know it took too, took a little too much to, to get there. I don't know the answer, but at times, you have to review things. And when I heard that, and then I'm seeing all the things that we're trying to do, this is not trying to box out the city of, of middle, city schools of Middletown at all. My point is, we have a document that they agreed to. And yes, any person that's appointed by city council can ask about a TIF. And maybe Mr. Moore looks, he looks very deep into things. So, that's why he asked that question. But my only question in my mind was, not Mr. Moore as a citizen, Mr. Moore as the representative of the school district, is like, why would you ask a question to something that you already agreed to? That's, that was my only concern. And I, and that's why, Mr. Moore, I was not trying to make you look bad or say anything. And I didn't say anything at the October minutes. Like, just let it go. We'll have this, this text amendment. But that is my feeling on the matter, is if you, 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 and the ladies here ask about a TIF, you're allowed, because you weren't in the meeting and you did not agree to it via a document. All we're doing on this text amendment, again, is removing the school district. And, hold on, let me finish that. And adding a seventh member that will fill out an application like everybody else and get appointed and be on, in that seat. That's it. Now, Mr. Moore, and this would be a question maybe that you ask the, the assistant city manager or the acting city manager. I do believe, because they tell us, and they give us reports, that the school district does meet at times with, when we're talking about developments. It might just be, hey, they're going to build a subdivision here. Is this in the school district? We can't tell off the maps. And the school district will, will show up to the meeting, say, yep, it's right here. It's on Union Road. It's right here is where Middletown and Franklin meet up. So, and I'm not trying to correct you, Mr. Moore, but when you said, we don't meet with, that the school district that you're aware of doesn't meet, I think they do, because we're in, they're in the same building.
Leadership does, yeah.
So, and, and while, and while they're talking about that, they might be saying, okay, you know, what is the impact? How many houses are we getting? How much, what's, what's the property value there? Are they condos? They houses? What, what's going on? So.
Just to close on this question here about the, about the TIF question, I, I just want to make it very clear, though, that when I ask about a TIF, it is relevant to this process. There's nothing that precludes that type of question. In fact, the reason that question was raised is to support the development and to support the taxation for the city of Middletown.
Absolutely.
And, and to show that in my role as, as a member to this body, that on behalf of the district, we support the economic development agenda of council. That's, that's what that question was.
And that's why, Mr. Moore, that's why I appreciate, just one, one second, Mr. Mantel. That's why I appreciate the contributions that you give, but you could also give them as an appointed member of city council. Mr. Mantel.
I believe at this point, we're starting to run in circles. I would like to know Mr. Cash's impression of the agreement, if you have any.
Well, I, well, I guess my question was going to be, nothing in this agreement precludes the appointment of a school board member or.
No, it does not.
The appointment.
No.
And as I see it, and I, I just read the whereas, because that set, generally sets forth the tone, the tenor of the agreement, and what is the overall objective or goal. And it appears to be, as Mr. Moore has said, it appears to be the, the financial and economic development of the city, as both the city and the school board can contribute. I don't see anything which says, as a result of this agreement, and I know it doesn't, and I know you're not saying it does, that this agreement says that it's in conflict with this current 1226.
That, yeah, 12, 1226.
Oh, one v. two. It's not in conflict with that.
Correct.
You're just arguing that as a result of this, the school board has basically forfeited its, voluntarily forfeited its.
And that's what I'm saying.
Position on the commit, on the planning commission, because the interests of the school board have been satisfied.
That's, thank you. See, that's why I'm not a lawyer. And, and I'm just going to say this one time. And I've said this many times when I, when I sit at city council. There are five things, and I always have it written down, just again, and I know we're trying to get too much off, off, off the course here. But there are five things that make a city great, and actually will put you in the top 10. And I'm just going to listen to you. But to me, one is the, is, is very important. First is health and wellness. Second is education. Three is resources for aging adults. Four, strong sense of community. And five, financial health. Now, I believe that the school system is the basis of a city. There are cities that are south to us that are in the top 10 of the United States, and that, it's based on they have a strong school system. Where I have a little bit of a conflict with that document, and I've done my own research, and you all do your own research, the question I have in my mind, doing research, Mr. Moore, on the, on that, where the whereas, is do the Middletown City School District, are they a benefit, or are they a detriment to our economic development? And you do your own research on that. And you might be pleasantly surprised, or you might be unpleasantly shocked. So, that could, if you could prove, you being a lawyer, they might be, be in breach of that contract if they are a detriment. Because it's, it says that, that they're supposed to be, it makes, the school district is, helps with a health, healthy economic development. It's a side point. So, it doesn't say, now that we have this, you need to get them off planning commission. And that is not, that is not the whole intent of my bringing this forward. It's more of, they have agreed, in theory, that when you have a developer come in and they want those TIFs, or they want those tax abatements, the school system says, in all future consideration, we're good. The city can proceed. Is that, is that, is that correct, Mr. Cash? That's in section 1A, B, and C.
I did, I didn't, I didn't. That would be incorrect. Not in every instance. We're, this is an overly broad conversation on a point where there.
Well, it says it right there. It, it says all future, it's also all future considerations. It's right there, Mr. Cash.
If I may, though, there's not a single school finance expert here with us. We're going in circles.
No, it was just a side point, Mr. Moore.
But let me, let me ask, let me, let me.
Well, ask your question.
I would like to respond to that question about the breach of contract. There is no breach of contract.
No, it's a, it's a statement, Todd, Mr. Moore. It's not a, I, I, I'm lawyering up. It was just a, I've done my own research.
You put an end to this, or we will. Let's draw it to a close.
Okay. Vote, vote yes or no.
Close yet, because I.
Well, Mr. Moore has more questions. And Mr. Ambergy, I apologize to you.
You need not apologize.
Well, I, I, I need to, I need to, you had to correct me, and I apologize. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Sir, I was going to, I was going to ask you about the question of control and, and having the ability to vet. I'm looking at G under review criteria. In, in your view, is there, if we look at a vacancy occurring, the language that is there, I agree with you that if I were a member of council, I think there's a certain level of vetting that I think is important. And I would probably make a similar argument.
Well, the, the vetting is, we hope that people, when they fill out the application, that it is truthful. So, the vetting is not, we're not doing, we're not sending this to the FBI or anything. Just to kind of educate you on what, what staff's doing. They're just checking to make sure, yes, Paul Horn lives at this address. And he is a, you know, and he checked the US Citizen. Most importantly, the one where it says felon. It makes sure that we don't have someone on a board that is hiding stuff.
I wasn't.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just about criminal or felonies or anything like that, but just in term, term limits, for instance, is what I'm referring to. Are you open to any solutions other than what you're proposing here with outright removing a seat? Is, would this, if you're, if you're looking at, for instance, I believe that each member besides a school board seat is a, is a four-year term. I believe that they can serve two terms. Is, in terms of looking at, at G, and we're looking at the terms, are you open, or do you outright want to remove a seat? Or do you want to have, A, some authority from maybe more than one board member being appointed, that council would have final say? And secondly, are you open, or is there any discussion about a term limit for that particular seat? As a remedy, as opposed. seat? As a remedy, opposed, as opposed to saying
An alternate.
Or any seat.
An alternate. Um, respectfully, no. I, I am passionate that I want the school district entity removed from planning commission, and that we have seven citizens that are appointed by city council and vetted by, uh, staff.
With all due respect, he has it, we have it. Are there any more witnesses?
Actually, I have, um,
We're speaking in favor at this point.
I'm speaking in favor, yeah. So, we, we haven't had anyone said against. Go ahead, Mr. Mantel.
Um, well, I was
Sorry, Todd.
Going to ask, are there any other commissions where, or other commissions or boards where there's a member
Nope. This is the only one.
This is the only one?
There, there's not on zoning, there's not on historical, there's not on library, there's not on cap, there's not on anything else. It's just, it's just
And that is accurate, and that's true, but there's a reason why it's different here.
Okay.
And the reason goes back, again, to this document, which could go back even further than the 1959 document. It was amended by ordinance in 1959. We don't know what the record before that is. But in that document from 1959, for more than 65 years, that document has been amended multiple times, in the 70s, in the 80s, it's been adopted, and numerous changes. But one thing has not changed. The language that says health, safety, general welfare. The relationship is unique, unlike a historic commission or any other board that we've referenced. The uniqueness of this relationship is that we share an economic future together, that we share the concerns of general welfare together. So, you've mentioned that you believe that the schools are failing. You believe that the district is a detriment to economic development. But it's also important to recognize the amount of poverty in the economics of the city, and why both sides are working to address that underlying question of poverty, to address the relationship between academic performance. That's the reason it's unique. That's the language that we have in here that talks about the general welfare. The general welfare being that the two entities, in addition to the economic relationship, in addition to the social relationship, and in addition to the community involvement together on numerous projects, including more than I could even reference here today, okay? CRA, the TIF, the abatements, on and on and on. That relationship is what makes this relationship unique, unlike all the others that are referenced. So, I want to bring us back again to the code. When we think about this, 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 I want to go back, and you, you said that you were not open whatsoever to any kind of remedy when it comes to term limits. You're not interested in having the ability to look at an alternate for final say. Really what you're saying is you believe that the schools are a detriment, you want to cut the seat and move forward.
I did not say they were a detriment. I said that, use your own research. I've done my own research. I did not say the school district is struggling. I did not say that they are a detriment. I simply put a question in front of this board, and everyone who's in this room, and everyone who's listening, that do your own research. And you find out if the school district is, if you look at their last report, they're doing better. And did I not say at the beginning of this, that I applaud, because we need people who want to work? They are working hand in hand with our Chamber of Commerce for the workforce development, be it they go right into the workforce, they go into the military, they go into trade schools, or they go into college. Did I not say that the Middletown school system is, and I applauded them on this, I believe so. But I think the question needs to be asked. So, I did not say, Mr. Moore, that I'm aware of, that I, Paul Horn, said that the school district is a detriment, and that they are an utter failure. If you look at the last report card, they're, they're looking good.
I'd like to have the floor.
Shall we wait until I
Yeah, that's, that's I want to ask him a question.
No.
Yes, you are.
Go ahead, Mr. Ambergy.
How many times have you walked into a school? How many times have you spent one day, three days a week, and watched the children, and watched the teachers, and watched the administrators interact with them? How many times have you researched that?
None.
Okay.
Now,
No, no, that's it.
To answer your question.
I got your answer.
Well,
Go ahead.
Mr. Ambergy, your, your wife actually was my second grade teacher. I went to Sherman School, Roosevelt School, Vail, Manchester Tech, and Middletown High School.
That's why you're smart. But you're, you're
But
Destroy yourself with your smart.
I got you. But the concern is, is when you talk to parents, which I have talked to parents, because I'm not really supposed to go into a school unless I have a kid. Now, I can ask the superintendent, can I do a tour? I can do that. But when I have conversations with parents, they have concerns, like the changing of the one-mile rule to the three-mile rule. And telling them in August, so now we have parents
But you haven't gone yourself.
Nope.
So, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna do some research myself. You do yours.
Okay. I will do that.
So, I do, I do think we understand the basis for why this amendment was brought forward.
Yep.
And a lot of this can be handled during deliberation, so maybe opening it up would be good to the public.
Yep.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposal, please come forward. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone opposing the change, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in, in opposition, please come forward. Mr. Cash, we'll swear you in.
You'll have, you'll have
You have to sit down.
Uh, over there, that, yeah, very good.
Right, right.
That's right.
Well, that one
That one doesn't work.
Nope.
You're good. Raise your right hand, sir. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
If you'd identify yourself.
My name, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold. Uh, my name is Tom Brickie. I live at 539 Cedarwood Court, here in Middletown. Excuse me. Um, I'm not here tonight to throw stones at anyone. Um, I'm not here to dump on anyone. I'm here because I care. And I'm gonna share a little bit of my background with you, and I think you'll understand why I care. I served on the school board for eight years. I believe it was 1992 through 1999. During that period of time, I was the school board's rep to the, uh, uh, planning commission. When I chose not to run again, um, the board asked if I would consider continuing as their rep. And I decided, yes, I can, I can fit that into my schedule. So, I served another 14 years. All in all, I served 22 years on, on the planning commission. And I like to think that during that time, uh, we did some pretty good work, didn't we, Chris? Uh, Chris and I worked together and, and tackled several issues. Um, I firmly believe that this is a, a relationship that needs to continue. And by the way, um, I, I never saw an issue that couldn't be resolved if the parties wanted to resolve it. And, and that's, that's a big part of it. Now, if people are drawing the line in the sand and saying, no, this is what I want, I'm not willing to budge, nothing's gonna happen. I mean, that's just not a recipe for success. I never saw a situation that we couldn't and didn't work out in all those 22 years. Um, and I worked with some, some really fine people, Mr. Ambergy being one of them. And that, that was, uh, well, for several years, wasn't it, Chris?
Eight.
Yeah, that sounds right. Um, I want to repeat something I said. I never saw a problem that couldn't be resolved if the parties really wanted to resolve it. If they're gonna dig their heels in and say, no, this is what I want, uh, it's this or nothing, progress will not be made. I personally feel like we've made a, a lot of progress over, uh, the time that I was there. Um, and there were some big issues that came up. And I'll, I'll, I'll share a couple of examples with you. Once the city decided to extend Braille Boulevard all the way down to 73, then that opened up all kinds of possibilities for development, and it was a good thing. So, over the course of time, uh, Miller Ridge neighborhood was developed. Um, and it's, I believe that Courtney Duff was involved deeply in that one, got a nice development. Arbor Point was developed, another nice development. The Fishball Brothers headed that one up. Well, along the way, there, there were concerns that arose. Okay, how is this going to affect the school district? How is this going to affect the city? Transportation, on and on and on and on. So, there was a lot of time spent at the table. But the mere fact that the school board had a representative, which was myself, but it could have been somebody else, um, everything got resolved. Because a concern from this side was heard, a concern from that side was heard. And, and we worked it out, because there was a mutual desire to work things out. The proof is in the pudding. We have two really nice developments. We've got a main artery that goes all the way down to 73, and it's, it's all good, in my opinion. It's all good. But it took a willingness and a mutual respect to make that happen. Another issue that, um, we spent quite a bit of time on, is acquiring the land to build the atrium hospital on. If you, those of you that have been around for a while, remember, we, we had our old Middletown hospital, and of course, things do change, and the needs out, outgrew the facility. So, we went to work. Um, not only did we work with each other down here, but we included the hospital folks as well. But again, a key was the willingness to make it work. And it took a little time. Finally, the land was identified. Um, we bought the land where the hospital sits today. The hospital was built, and the rest is history. That's an example of what can be done if the parties are willing to work together. You know, there's an old expression, but every once in a while, it pops up again, and it goes like this. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Uh, and, and that says a lot. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. You've gotta be willing to work together and understand each other. Not want to knee jerk, and all of a sudden, if I don't get my way, then I want somebody removed. That doesn't get it. That doesn't make progress. Another thing that came up that took a lot of cooperation on, from both parties, well, actually, a third party, was the rezoning of the land that enabled the construction of the Sun Coke coke-making operation. Now, that was a big one. It was important. And when we went, the parties went back and forth. But again, there was a mutual desire to succeed, not take potshots at each other. That, that doesn't accomplish anything. There were, there were property issues, there was a, a concern about the school that, um, serviced that area. Uh, but over time, uh, those concerns were, were dealt with. And we all know the result. We achieved the zoning, uh, uh, change that was needed, so that that facility could be built. And there was a lot of interaction. This entire chamber was filled with people who were concerned about that. But they were willing to listen. And this is what made it work. They were willing to listen. Everybody gave a little bit. So, we, we ended up with a successful conclusion. We changed the zoning. The coke-making operation got built, and it was a, uh, a benefit to the entire city, uh, because it, it brought about a source of coke, which the steel mill badly needed. And of course, there's a lot of jobs involved in, in that operation. So, again, it was a win-win, because people wanted a good outcome. They, they, they wanted a success. Um, I could go on and on and on. But what I want to say to you in, in closing here is, it's so important, in my mind, still today, to have this relationship where the school board, excuse me, has this representation on the planning commission, because if there are concerns the school has, those concerns can be brought forth. Those in city, and, uh, in the city, uh, employment situation, um, are made aware of things. Council members are made aware of things. It's all good. There's, there's nothing negative about that. But again, it takes the willingness to make it work, and not throw darts at each other. But, but be dedicated to achieving, um, the best outcome. Well, I'm gonna wrap up, and I'm gonna summarize, uh, uh, right back where I started. In fact, I'm gonna use a well-worn cliche, but it says a lot. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Planning commission isn't broke. Planning commission will do its job. Planning commission needs a representative from the school system. I have experienced what can be achieved, and honestly, folks, it's a win-win for everyone. And I'm requesting that you don't make this change, because I know how successful it can be when, when we work together. Uh, I don't know, really, I scratched my head to try to figure out what precipitated this to, uh, become an issue. And even here tonight, I, I, I haven't heard anything that justifies, in my mind, making an issue out of this. It's been a winning combination for as long as I can remember. I know it goes back to the early 60s, maybe even, even longer than that. And it's always worked. I'm gonna wrap up with a cliche again. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And folks, it ain't broke. Thank you very much for listening.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
If I may sum up my thoughts, um, I think that it is wise to not burn the bridge between the planning commission and the school district. Um, I agree with the concept of education in schools being, um, the foundation of a great city. And I think that building connections, especially in this day and age when there is so much isolation and division, building connections, um, is, or maintaining connections in this case, um, would be the most beneficial course of action.
Obviously, those remarks that AJ has made are extremely important. But I think this is even simpler than that. Mr. Horn just indicated that the vetting process for an applicant, if the school board member is eliminated, is simply checking at, confirming address, lack of criminal felony record, I guess, any record probably, and, and just minimal information. And I'm thinking, well, the school board, if I'm not mistaken, I elect school board members, so I'm assuming the vetting of a school board member for, by the public itself, would be far more extensive than that vetting there. So, I really see, if that's the issue, if that's the vetting that the, that the council now wants to implement on the seventh member, well, that vetting by the school board election, like I said, is much more, much more extensive, extensive and deep. I, I, I see no, I, I don't see any reason to remove a school board member.
I, I don't disagree. I just want to clarify, though, um, the member that's appointed by school board is not necessarily a member of said board, correct? It is just appointed by them, or is it also a member of that board?
It has to be a school board member, I believe.
I think it's typically a school board member, but it doesn't actually say in the code that it has to be. It can be anyone
In practice, it generally is, though.
Yeah.
The gentleman that just spoke said he did it for a number of years
Yeah.
When he wasn't on the board, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if it's a
Good catch.
Sure.
Great question.
To, just to build off of, of your point, if it's a question of vetting, it seems maybe that the amendment should be some, somewhere else within this text to require that vetting rather than to... I don't, I don't wanna, if that's what the issue is, then that does feel a little different to me. All, all I'll, I'll say is, I, based off of what's been discussed, it doesn't seem to me that there is reason enough to, to make this, based on the criteria, to, to, to cause the amendment.
I, I have to say, like, I, I understand your effort to make it a little bit more cohesive of, yes, this is the only board that has a member which is appointed by another entity. But I think Mr. Moore makes a good point when he says that this connection is unique in how it contributes to the board and our decisions as like a collective entity.
I have a question about process moving forward. So, the difference here between tabling this issue and a no vote. Could you clarify that for me? In terms of a text amendment? Because I think what I'm hearing here is, it doesn't rise to the level of us moving or making a recommendation either way. In some ways, that we don't see that there is, or the board does not see that there is good rationale here. I'm looking at taking no action as opposed to saying a no vote. Because my understanding is if a no vote is taken to council, at that point, council either accepts or rejects the no vote. So...
Yeah, that's correct. I, I mean, in theory, you could table it, and then it would be on your agenda for your next meeting. But it, tabling is not intended to just stay an issue indefinitely. So if you don't feel that there is enough here to recommend approval of this text amendment, in my mind, that would be a recommendation of denial of the text amendment, rather than tabling it.
But denial can be overridden by council, is that correct?
That is correct, by majority vote of council.
So that makes me wonder if there is, I'd like to extend some rationale here as far, because I, I'm looking, I, if, I, I think that Mr. Cash's point is, is very, very relevant. In terms of vetting, you know, I've had to stand before three different elections. I've been vetted by the public three different times. Tried to earn the respect of my colleagues and the respect of my community. So I'm here representing that, that vetting process. But I also understand your concern. If you wanted, I mean, I can understand the sensitivity of having, maybe you want more control of having a member that you vet, as opposed to saying that I should be that member from the other board. That's why I've tried to ask if there's some other remedy that would allow us to maintain a relationship as opposed to saying we just entirely want to cut a seat. I don't want to make this about me. I'm here to argue that I believe that the relationship and that that process is valuable to our community, based on the criteria for review. That is the general welfare. I think that we have, a, a good example of this is the contribution the city made to send our kids to go to the J.D. Vance inaugural. That is wonderful, Paul, okay? And, and it's much appreciated. In addition to the work that we've done together on, with Miami University. And we could go on and on and on. And again, I think where some of this, for me, is a little confusing, is that I feel that for whatever underlying reason is going on here, and I'm telling you that I don't understand it, and neither does my five board colleagues understand where it's coming from. I don't understand what the frustration is. I always want to have a good working relationship with the city. I want to have a good working relationship with the staff. And I would be just as adamant on my side to maintain that relationship as you are in trying to make changes for yourself. I only want the best for both parties. But this isn't about me. That's why I'm trying to look at a remedy that would say, as opposed to saying you want to cut the member, that it allows the board, the council, I'm sorry, the council some authority to, to vet that person a little bit differently, a school board member. But I don't hear you saying that. You want to cut the entire seat.
Well, as, as a member, I'll, I'll respond. Because I'm, I'm also, me and Claire are non-voting members, according to the ordinance here. So, what you can do is like, let me give you a case that you guys sent to us. It was Mr. Hensley who owns the, the Toddle Inn, that property up there. And he wanted to change it from mixed-use to business. And it's when Mr. Metz was here, and you guys sent it to us, and you said no. So, we reviewed it, and we just saw something different. And we said yes. So, just like you sent Lincoln Heights last time, you can say, yes, but we want these, we want these addendas saying that now, in January, when the school district says, we're gonna have Mr. Moore as a representative again, you can vet him. Is that, that's what I'm kind of hearing. Or Joe, Joe Smith or Mary Smith. You can put that in the language that you send back to us as redlining, and then we can consider it, or we can go back to the original. Or you can just say no, just like you did with the, the Mr. Hensley's property. And then we review it, and then we make a decision. That's, that's, that's what I mean. You can do either or, I believe.
There are two, there are actually two, but I'm hearing that as two separate issues. One's a role of planning commission, which you would have authority of that either way. And the other is to the seat itself. But I, I'm not following exactly the logic.
Well, you, you just said, you wanted, you, you want to, to add, you want to put an addenda here for city council, the, the school district sends an email to Amy, and they sent it to us saying, this is going to be your representative. We don't get, and, and, you know, you can, you, you guys can decide, yes, that's our, that's our, that's our person, or no, can you, or can you send multiple names? And we can vet, that's what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Moore, is that we get the, the part of the selection process, just like when you fill out an application online, and we get A.J. Mintel saying, I want to be on planning commission, I want to be on historical, I want to be on anything I can do because I want to volunteer. And then we receive it, and that's, that's what I'm kind of hearing, that you might want to do an addenda. So you can vote yes and send the addenda to us, and then we can say, nope, on the addenda, we want back, go back to the original. Or you say no, and you send it to us, and we deliberate two readings, and we vote. Just like anything else that you guys send to us.
I think Mr. Horn is just getting at the point that you are permitted to modify the text amendment and submit that with a recommendation of approval instead of just flatly denying it and having this be the only thing that council considers.
Or we can deny it and let council show their colors.
You could deny it.
That's been in my brain ever since I read it. Let you show your colors.
Absolutely.
Because as one witness said, it's not broken. There's something behind this that we don't know. And you know damn well there is. There's something behind it that we don't know.
So, I'm new to this process. So, I'm, what I'm hearing correctly, and I just want to summarize what you said, is that we can essentially edit, add an addenda to this proposal. What Mr. Moore said, I think that if this is really such a controversial issue, which I'm not feeling that that's the, the case. But if it, if there is a conflict of interest between the board's decisions and the, you know, the, the school board's decisions, then should the school board member be chosen by the fellow member, like, council-appointed members of the board? You know, change the process a little bit. But that also might be just compromise for compromise's sake.
Accountability, maybe, is what you're hitting on.
Yes.
Yeah, see, that's, that's one of the issues, is we, we haven't broached that at all as far as accountability and just holding each other accountable through that, that process itself. But again, I want to remove myself as far out of the question. I'm listening to, to my colleagues here. As I said, I do believe, you know, that there is value in maintaining a seat, maintaining the relationship. I want to have a working relationship. I know all board members want to have a working relationship with the city and the staff. I, you know, one, one of the concerns I've had coming into this meeting was, are you aware, Paul, of the, the city district relations committee?
No.
Okay, that's, that is a problem, okay? Because we have, in terms of our organizational meeting, which is less than a month from now, there is a, there is a, a committee that's set up from your leadership, which involves the mayor and the city manager, Nathan Cahill. And it also involves the superintendent and the board chair, which I am not the board chair of the school board. But that committee is in our organizational structure. And that is the city, the, the city district relations committee. They meet on, I believe, on a monthly basis? Is that correct, Ashley? Do you know if they meet on a, I know they, they're meeting every month. Here's, here's my point.
Can you just give me a small, what is the purpose of that district?
As it, as defined, to maintain a good working relationship between both entities. Because we're not controlling either side. That is not the intent. The intent of that is to maintain a good working relationship. So a good example of this is that when I ask the superintendent, when I ask the treasurer, when I ask the board chair, are you aware of any underlying issue that has been brought forward from council besides me watching the council meetings? And I've been to the council meetings, you've seen that, you asked me to come, I did appear. During that process, at any time, was an SRO contract in question? Was a porta potty in question? Was some other misunderstanding or miscommunication in question? And the answer was no, okay? Now, whether that got translated to us or not as a school board, or to me or not, that organizational structure exists. And what's concerning to me is that we have jumped from a committee that's part of the organizational structure on your side, which is the city, and our district side. And for whatever reason, this organizational committee is not translating whatever the underlying issue is. I, this is hitting me from the blind side. You know, I'm trying to take myself out of this as much as I can and focus on the relationship between the two entities, us and the seat itself. But at no point in those discussions, and it is record, you can pull the public record of their meeting minutes, their discussion, the topics they come from, or, or addressing together on a monthly basis, at no point can I point to anything that would even rise to the level of meeting criteria here. So that's why it's very confusing to me. If, if you're not aware of that committee, I think that you should be aware of that committee and find out more about it. I ask questions about the committee because in each of our, in each of our meetings, which are twice a month, at the end of our meetings, much like a council meeting, the committee reports. And that's where we hear about the issues that were raised during that time. So, that, you know, again, I was, if there was issues there, I would have liked to have known about them. But I, I, again, I'm trying to remove myself from the process as much as possible. I'm only just raising that as a question. My, what I'm hearing, Paul, is that you're not much open to remedies other than removing the seat. That's what I'm hearing, and that's where I'm struggling with that, so. Yes?
With your, the, it seems the two main points, if we're looking at sort of the logic behind wanting to remove the position, is the one being a lack of vetting and a two being the, the document that was presented. Now, I, I did not read through the document, the whole thing, so I apologize if this isn't correct. But listen, it doesn't sound like there was any sort of, part of the agreement is that they would be forfeiting that position. So it seems unfair that, to, to jump from getting complete carte blanche acceptance to saying that that means that they no longer have the position. If anything, maybe it could even be like a checks and balance of, we're going to, you know, agree to respect this, but we're gonna have, you know, a seat at the table. To be fair, though, that's not a, you know, there, because that's not part of that document from what it sounds like. The second one being, if it's a vetting part of it, then maybe that needs to be the first amendment. There needs to be an amendment that includes a vetting process. And if that's still not working, then you would jump to this. It feels like this is maybe jumping to something before a first step is being taken. If that is the other main, main point to me.
To that point, you know, again, a denial from, procedurally in council, please correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, a denial here goes to, to council, and council at that point makes, they take the recommendation one way or the other. They, they will do that. That missing step is really why I raised that committee. So one example, looking for a remedy, if there is a remedy. One thing that I thought of that could, that could take place is that we could grant a continuance. That continuance would go to the school, the city school relations committee. At that point, you would be represented by the city manager, and you would be represented by the mayor. And on our side, we would have representation at that meeting to talk about the relationship and why this relationship is important by the cities, or by our side, being represented by the, the board chair and the superintendent. And then we'd have something on record. Right now, all we have is a lot of documents being thrown around, a lot of assumptions being thrown around, those sorts of things. But at least that step that Will's talking about, you have a public record at that point. And at, at that point, you could talk about remedies. You might invoke term limits. You might say, we, which I would even agree, that you should have some control over that process, that the board, the school board might say, here's two candidates, you choose the two candidates. And what I would tell you tonight, this will be my last meeting as a member of this body. I'm removing myself entirely from the process. I will not be serving on planning commission. I will not be reapplying to the planning commission. I will not be serving on the board of zoning pills, nor will I reapply. I've served my time. I've tried to do that fairly. I've tried to do it with integrity. And I've tried to follow the process to the very best of my ability. And I think it's time for me to step aside and to remove myself entirely from the process. This has been pure hell for me for the last four months dealing with this issue. Round and round we go on an issue that I can't understand. So, for me, I will be removing myself from the process. This will be up to this board moving forward, how you decide this question. But the one thing I would like to recommend on my way out is I would like to see this take that additional step. I would like that additional step to at least be something on the record. As opposed to what I see is just, it's, it's merely, I, I can't point to anything here. And at that point, you come back in one month, and you guys decide that you should do something else, that will go through the process, and at that point, you can remove the seat if that's where you're at. But I think that there's a missing step here. I think that step should go to this committee, and let's get, let's figure out if there's any interest between the parties. We are hearing from you, but it would be interesting for us to be able to share our side as well, and why that's important. If, if that doesn't seem interesting, then we can go to denial, and we can move forward. That's just a suggestion. I mean, I can think of numerous ways to strengthen this. I can think of all sorts of ways to strengthen this. I can think...
That's, that's the best answer that I've heard.
I mean, I can think of a term limit, I can think of having multiple members, I can think of serving one term, there's all sorts of remedies here. The, the bottom line is, there's no rationale for me to remove the seat because of the relationship. But if you want to have a different board member, or if you want to have a term limit, you want to have something else, I'm offering all those things as suggestions. And if it just comes down to, hey, I just don't want a seat, I think that's a bad idea. But I, I will not be at this table when that decision's made.
I've been, I've been on this commission for a number of years now. And I haven't always agreed with Todd, but he has only one vote out of seven. So there's, there's no, there's no situation where I thought he was being unfair to the city. And, you know, I guess this, I was sort of blindsided by some of these questions that come up because I didn't have the, kind of, background. And I read the materials that we had, and I just, you know, if that's what the city council wants, then I don't have a real problem with it. Because it doesn't really, I mean, the school board member can't really influence completely. I would think we could do something like one additional voting member that meets the city's qualifications that they use on other members. Could be appointed by the, or recommended by the Board of Education. Something along that line. I would think would address some of the concerns that I've, I guess I've heard here.
So it sounds like now that you all understand the rationale behind this text amendment, you'd like a little bit more time to consider possible ways to modify it and meet everyone's expectations in terms of how this process would go moving forward? And if that's the case, then, Mr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like Todd's suggesting tabling this text amendment to give you all time to consider modificate, or modified versions of it that you could bring back to the next meeting, and also directing staff to take this to the city manager and hopefully get it on the city district relationship committee, committee meeting agenda in the interim?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think that's paramount.
So it would not be instructing the city manager to do anything, it would be instructing
staff, which would be myself and Claire, to take this to the city manager's attention for him to, if he so chooses, take it to the city district relationship committee.
So procedurally, council, how would you like to structure that motion?
I just ask, do we, do we need to table it too? I mean, I don't know, I don't think a month is going to change my mind on anything personally. I don't know why we would, unless the rest of the board wants to.
Well, I'd like to see that, those two committees get together. I think this is a sensible thing to do, instead of one person coming here and one person saying this, or one person saying that. That exists, was put there for a reason, let them work.
If any, but, correct me if I'm wrong, could we not vote, vote on this, but then also have that as part of it, as saying we want them to meet going forward? Or do they have, do we have to say they meet first?
If you take a vote, you send it to council. And then they can vote on whatever they want. As I said, show their colors. And then the other group, they're rendered useless.
Okay. I was thinking, as part of like an addendum, I wasn't sure how that would work though.
I really think more people need to be involved in this. And don't take that personally. But I mean, if you're going to be a crusader, and I only, Paul, I only say this to you, sir, because I too was once an appointee, okay? So don't be a crusader, that's my request of you as a citizen.
I think it's in the best interests of this body to come back to this, to table it, maybe come up with some alternatives. And then, should the alternatives not be satisfactory, then we move on from there.
I think we should get some of the documents that have been brought up here, to take a look at.
So as far as structure, like structuring that as a movement, I'll, I'll, I've got a scan, because I sent it to Todd, I'll send it to Claire, and then she will email you guys your own copy, so you can redline it yourself.
We also have copies of the 1959 meeting minutes, too. We didn't have time to get them in the staff packet, but they are up in legal, and they just need to be scanned into the system.
They'll get you all the documentation you need, not a problem.
Yeah, the minutes from 1959.
No, I'm talking about the one that we signed.
I know.
Oh, yeah. It's kind of neat.
Just not sure that that's going to influence me one way or the other.
It's just those providence and where it started, where it all started. So council, I'm just unsure of how to structure, like a movement to proceed, just being new to this, so like, table, question mark?
So ju, just to confirm then, because a couple of different ideas were tossed around, maybe doing the parallel process of denial, and then also taking it to the city district committee, or tabling, take it to the city district committee, consider revisions, and come back to you all. Is that the latter that you're thinking about?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's well documented on the record, then. It can just be a simple motion to table this, or continue the hearing in progress, is the language I'd like to use, until the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
I would make a motion then, based off of the wording you just gave.
I will second that motion.
Oh, nevermind, sorry. Sorry.
So there is a slight issue with that wording. There is a plan development coming to you guys in January that needed public notice for 30 days. So the regular meeting on the eighth, I was going to push until the 13th. That was under an old new business, so I just wanted to make sure our language is correct.
Totally fine.
All right. Who, who made the motion?
Make that motion again, then.
Thank you.
And I will second it.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambergy?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
Okay, then moves us now to our next public hearing. This is a request by Jordan Wallace. And Ms. Fetters, I will let you take the case from here.
All right, this is a request by Jordan Wallace of SBA Market Avenue LLC to amend the approved plan development located at the northwest corner of Market Avenue and Union Road, known as those listed parcels, to remove commercial uses from the development, reconfigure the layout of the building, increase the number of dwelling units, decrease the number of buildings, increase the acreage of the development, and vary the number of stories for the buildings. The project will also need approval by city council. So the subject property is Zone BCH Business Center Hub Sub District. The purpose of this district is to create an urban mixed-use core that serves as a vibrant hub of the B C district, encourage signature architecture and landscaping treatment in urban pedestrian scale environment through building height and building and parking lot placement and design. The currently approved final development plan is comprised of 10 buildings with 243 units with three stories. The development is approved to span 12.6 acres to accommodate the multifamily residential and commercial uses. The final development plan was approved by the city's planning commission on November 9th, 2022, and received a one-year time limit extension on November 13th, 2024, to allow for a total of three years before development begins. The final development includes the following specifics: an apartment development that includes seven 24-unit residential buildings, three 25-unit residential buildings, a clubhouse, outdoor recreation area, and a dog park. The applicant proposes to decrease the number of buildings to nine buildings, increase the number of units to 314 units, and have a varying number of building heights ranging from three to four stories. The development is proposed to increase the size by 1.767 acres for a total of 14.367 acres to accommodate the multifamily residential use of the subject parcels. Per the Middletown Development Code notice requirement, public notice was provided to all owners within 200 feet of the properties, and notice was published in the Journal News, no comments had been received to date, and no comments have been received at this time from other city departments. The 2022 Comprehensive Land Use Map labels this property within the employment mixed-use area. The employment mixed-use area is defined as primarily office, high-tech industrial, medical, and other similar uses with secondary uses that include commercial service and Here is the text that kicked this to you guys. It's considered a major change that will require city council approval. I'm going to flip through some slides presented, or provided by the applicant. Here's the current, currently approved final development plan design. The updated site plan, this building right here, the L-shaped building, that is the The current, currently approved building elevations. The zoning map. Here's your review criteria for the final development plan. And the staff recommendation is, based on the staff report provided, staff recommends approval of the amendment of the development plan for the Atticus located at those parcels, with a recommendation that the additional building be constructed with similar building materials as the other buildings for a consistent color and material scheme. And that will conclude my staff report.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Fetters before we open the public hearing? Okay. I'd like to now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the change, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Moore, the Melpers here, does he normally speak first or after the public hearing? Or he can speak forward, I guess?
Yes, he definitely would like to come and speak forward. Yeah, yeah, speak in favor.
Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
And identify yourself if you will.
Jordan Wallace, 5956 Sherri Lane, landowner at the northwest corner of Union and Market.
I was going to say, if you prefer to sit down, you may, or however you choose, yeah, it's up to you.
I've been sitting.
Well, I need a break, don't you?
As additional respect, I just want to stand here. Be odd for me to sit. So I did prepare a presentation. Is there an opportunity for me, maybe to kind of go through that? In, first and foremost, thank you all for your time and listening to the reasoning I've worked with staff, and kind of in response to some of the discussions we've had. This project is familiar to the many members that were here previously, two years ago, whenever we discussed this project. The world's changed. It changed whenever I purchased this property three years ago, it changed whenever we were in that, that planning commission meeting in the fall, and then the economic environment's changing again. We're back at the table, simply for the reason we feel like the feasibility is getting closer to attainment now that interest rates have gone down, although we still continue to struggle with the cost of construction to get this development underway. I'm very passionate about this project. I've been developing it for seven years now in Ohio. I am a big believer in Middletown. I've put a lot of money into this investment to hopefully see what I believe is a quality development. And for those that may not be aware, in November of 2021, the city had requested a third-party market study. And that was really what attracted me to this area, is, as you all know, of the 12 apartment complexes that are in our community here, they're all very, very old. And the quality of the, the living is what I would consider to be below par, for even, even almost to the level of poverty, not to offend any of those properties. You know, there's, there's an easy answer to here, to say, hey, I want to do cheap apartments, but my reputation doesn't stand behind that. I've built 30, 300 units in my career, and really stood behind the relationship between the city, and also what I say I'm going to do. I fought very hard to keep this project in play, and we still continue to have financial struggles with this project as it relates to just the feasibility, because the risk of going into this area. I also sit here as probably the only multifamily developer that's willing to take a risk this large. I've met with numerous developers across the state that all have given me one answer and one answer only, that a CRA is required if you want us to come into Middletown. Those other developers, through many, many meetings over the last six to eight months, have told me that. They said, we love Middletown, we think it's got potential, but too risky. And you could see just with the developments 15 minutes north and south of here, those communities committed to seeing these qual, higher-quality developments, and they flourished as a result. Fortunately or unfortunately, I'm probably the first person at the front of the guillotine to see if this actually works or doesn't work. I know I've heard a lot of speculation that Middletown is flourishing and all these developments are happening, but the reality is, we drive around here compared to other, other cities north and south of here, we're just not there yet. And I think it's, I think it really relates to taking this first step and putting a quality development on the ground. So I did prepare a presentation to give more of some, some history between, you know, why are we going from 243 to now 314? Because I think that could be something necessary for clarification. And so historically, I want to refer back to two years ago, whenever we were meeting with city staff and council about this project, we were asked, because of the decision-making, to put a residential development here. We were reduced down to our density, and there was a request to put a commercial development there on the corner. That also reduced our ability and footprint based off of our parking ratios and requirements. So we followed that request, we went through that notion. You know, since 2021, whenever that, that history, you know, that market study was completed, only one multifamily project's been developed. And I wouldn't attribute that to Middletown specifically. I think as a nation, right now, we're, we're really struggling to develop multifamily. I personally have only done two or three multifamily projects since this time, too. I, like I mentioned earlier, I think Middletown continues to kind of be overlooked. There's a lot of speculation about development, and things happen and occurring, but I don't see a lot of action because the fear of kind of taking that first step and making that action. So, you know, I'm here before you today because this is an important project to me. We are ready to proceed forward. We're fortunately already permitted on this project after working with staff over the few years. So making a modification like this, and I appreciate staff's ability to work with me with, with the amount of design we've already put in place, because it has been costly to go through that process. And so we compromised with adding a more visible screen to the property and more of a building that aligns with that whole district as it relates to atrium and Renaissance. Don't maybe look too far into the rendering, because right now, it's more just to show contrast at what's approved and what we're adding, but I do want to work with staff to really make that corner look as sharp as possible. A lot of this is really boring data, so I'm just going to scroll over, but this was from y'all's, the city had a third-party report. It shows the rating level of apartments in this community, all ranking it, you know, Bs and Cs, and then also dating to the, you know, the 60s and 70s when the current options for multifamily were here. So there's four developments below us here. I'm not building the edge or innovation way, I'm talking about a true Class A multifamily project that has considerable visibility in your most important thoroughfare as the growth of Middletown continues to expand that direction. You can also see from the data that was provided through this, this market study, that the grading of these apartments is very low, the quality of these apartments is very low, and I won't dwell anymore on that subject based off what's been presented by that third party. One of the most important things is, I think sometimes it's hard to see, like, what is the economic impact of this development? Like, this isn't just housing. This creates 40 jobs. You know, we have onsite property managers, and leasing managers, and maintenance personnel, and landscaping personnel, and pool, and gym instructors, and all kinds of ecosystem that are created from quality multifamily developments. It also creates a tremendous hundreds of jobs during construction, which we hire local, and we utilize those resources, which create more economic infusion into the actual area itself. This community has a potential to add, with this, this adjustment, we would have about 600, 600 residents or so, which is, whenever you look at it from a micro level of how much is that individual user spending each year, it equates to about $7.5 million. And right now, that $7.5 million goes north of you and south of you. And you can see it just because of the amount of activity whenever you go through those other towns. This would allow and preserve that sales tax to go back to your city, also to help you continue to grow, you know, whether it be your public developments, or certain, you know, in the interest of the city that y'all would like to continue to flourish, whether it be parks or other common amenities. Some of the important things that we are preserving, so we do have a dog park in this community, we're not taking an impact on that. I think pets are a priority in everybody's lives these days, and so we are preserving all of our green space that we originally showed on the drawings, and we're doing a really nice pool. So we're not compromising any quality with this request for additional units. And Claire, thank you so much for sharing those earlier sides, this kind of makes this short for me. So.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Wallace? Any questions?
Yeah, how, how much does the development that's going on right now, about a half a mile from, from here, that event center, you know, how much is that influencing what you're doing?
In, as far as the decision to build or not build?
Well, you go into apartments, or even the design you've got.
I would say it doesn't have much influence. You're referring to the- You refer to the defense center? Is that what you said? It, it is not our original thesis.
They're moving a lot of dirt right now and they're, you know, they're, they're putting in the, all the sewers and all that type of thing right now. That's only half a mile from where you are.
So I wasn't aware of that project prior to purchasing the property three years ago. Neither was I aware of, of the event center either. So we, we truly were the, the pioneer as far as coming to this area. I think it was just by coincidence on December 6th, two years ago, that the agenda item to purchase that event center land was, was brought to the table.
So you don't see that as a positive or a negative to your development?
I, I think it's a positive. I, I would, I think any sort of development's a positive. I don't have a particular, I don't have particular knowledge of that development, so I don't know exactly how it benefits me or doesn't.
So with the increase in the amount of units, which, you know, I'm very like pro-density, so I appreciate that, but how does that affect the, the prices or the housing? Because I'm also density, but also affordable housing. So like you, um, this, I, I don't mean this is like against you, but one of the things that differentiates Middletown from the places north and south, you know, 15 minutes or so, is that they are suburbs of larger cities. The population of Middletown provides service jobs to those suburbs. So it is a very, it's a different kind of economic tilt that goes there. And I'm not supposed to bring people in, but I also want to do what is possible to keep things affordable for people that already live here, looking for a way out of these sort of impoverished areas, as you mentioned.
Sure, so the market drives the price, not the apartment, unfortunately. And so, so you yield to statistics, and I don't mind boring you with the, the market study that we produced, but it actually shows you what your, your available renters, what they can afford, what the average income and what your demographics are.
That is your intent, market price?
Yes, sir.
And will these be owned or rented?
Fully, fully rented.
Fully rented, okay.
Long-term rental, to clarify.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you all for your time.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please now come forward. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? You don't have to be swearing again, Paul. Or do you?
I think one swearing is probably worse.
So again, I am definitely for responsible growth. I'll, I'll start a new phrase. And to me, these 314 units, which will have, will be optically, and that's why Jordan was talking about, it needs, it needs to have that high-end look, because you are across from the atrium. You are near the Renaissance. You're near the, you're near the interstate. You're near the Y, which will also have the aquatic center. But going along with the density, we, we need these. We need this. We're, we're growing with these. And I always try to champion and say, we need to continue to do these responsibly, like we have some concerns with some other developments. But with this, I do like it that we have green space. We have spaces for, for doll, for our fur buddies. But again, we're close to all employers. We're close to the interstate. We're two miles away from a city park, be it Jako or, or Lefferson. You're two miles away from Hunter, which is another park. And then the gem of Warren County, they're very proud of, is you're about three miles from Armco Park. This, this development is near, well, when Renaissance is done, which is still going to be some time away, and eventually when they do the development of the town mall. So this is poised to really help grow people, bring people in. And when I see things like this, it, and give me a little rope on this, and don't take this incorrectly. This is someone's first apartment, or it might be their last apartment, meaning this is where you start. Or you're done cutting grass, you're done shoveling snow, you want to be around people and you just want to have a place to live, that you can park your car, and you're close to the hospital, you're close to all the doctors that are there. So that's what I mean by that. So I don't want to be disrespectful on either side of it, but this is where you kind of start in any type of apartment situation before you decide to invest into a home or a condominium. So, so we are definitely for, or I am definitely for, not we, I just want to speak for me, on continually to develop more and more living spaces, because when you live here and then there's things to do, and we're trying to do that responsibly, then people don't need to go to other cities or other townships, because they have things to do here. And this is their home, and this is where they want their, raise their, their family and have them educated here and then keep the process going. As I've stated before, while I'm doing what I'm doing, I'm here for the 10-year-old, the 20-year-old and the 30-year-old. The person who wants to think about what they're going to be doing in the future, the person who is out of school and trying to figure out what they're going to do, and then the 30-year-old who's wanting to invest in, in our city. And that is the, always the intent, but we want to do this obviously very responsibly. But I think optically and location-wise, this is a, a good start for that, that part of town. Back to you, Mr. Moore.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone else? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Okay, we will close, we will close the public hearing, and we can move to deliberation. I think we have a staff recommendation for approval. Any other questions or concerns about the approval?
I think it looks fairly institutional, looking at these pictures. There's not a whole lot of variety from different parts of the buildings. Doesn't mean I'm not going to, going to vote for it, but I guess I would have hoped for something a little more attractive. It looks like an extension of the hospital, to me. I, I, I was here when we looked at this two years ago, and I liked the fact that it was a mixed-use facility with some commercial and, and other things there. None of that's going to necessarily cause me to vote against it.
Any other, any other comments? Any other questions? Would someone like to make a recommendation for approval? Accept a staff recommendation for approval?
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambergy?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mantel?
Okay, that brings us now to older new business, the OKI Board. Claire?
Yeah, so I recently attended this, the executive committee as just a member of the public, which is a subset of the board of directors. I'm not, I would not be a voting member, but the city of Middletown is permitted essentially to have somebody as a planning commission representative attend the board of directors meeting. It's a rather large group. I think it's like 140 in total. James Metz, the, the former city planner, had attended in the past, but in speaking with Ashley on this, she recommended you guys vote on who attends as your representative. But I know that it is definitely city council's wish or desire that Middletown be represented at all these different events and, and workshops, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why that is before you. I don't, I'll let you guys kind of deliberate on that.
I'm certain, Claire, that you'd do a fantastic job at OKI, so I, you definitely have my support. Traditionally, we've always had the, the city planner there. We definitely want representation at OKI.
Great group.
Yep, and I would, I would certainly support you 100%.
Yeah.
And a side point, OKI is the reason why we're getting EV charger, chargers in Middletown. They, they provided the grant for the $1.5 million for the four chargers that we did receive. So, and I, I am the alternate. Actually, I have to go there tomorrow for their meeting. There's a lot of people there, so it's all, but you also do a lot of networking. When they, they told me, well, you can't vote. It's like, okay. How do you know if, if they're, they're voting or not? Because it's just like, everyone just yells yes and they just listen for no. I'm, I'm sorry. It's just, it's a, it's a really good group and it represents our tri-state area. So it also gives us opportunities for grants that maybe we weren't aware of. So it, it is, to, to repeat what Mr. Ambergy said, it is a great group. And Mr. Moore?
Well, this is older new business. I just wanted to say happy, happy, Merry Christmas. I hope you have a happy one, too, by the way, but Merry Christmas to everyone.
Mr. Moore, I do have new business, just briefly. It is the end of the year, and unfortunately, Mr. Moore's term is up, so you do need to pick a, a chairman for the January meeting, per the charter. And then we also need the annual report, and I don't know who does that, but it needs to be sent to city council or... I know we, I don't do it, but it says we get an annual report, and I don't, I don't know if the report is just stats of, this is how many cases you heard, this is how many cleared, or what's ongoing, but it does say we're supposed to get an annual report. We can get it in January, but I just want to remind that it is the end of the year. That's my new business.
Yeah, I was going to say, Paul, we, I'm not aware that we've ever issued a annual report, at least from us. I know it is in the record of an annual report, but I'm not aware that we've ever taken that.
If it's not practice, I, I don't, I'm just reminding.
Yeah. As far as chair and those sorts of things, I believe that would be done at the organizational meeting when you guys come back. We typically will not do that at the last meeting here. It would be done at your organizational meeting when you come back. Okay, brings us to adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Have a good evening.